Good morning. I call to order the August 25, 2020, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission?
Good morning. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections 309 South Broadway. I want to, I've been thinking about this for a while, and I think that because I don't see anybody running up and giving me my own TV show, I thought this was the place to do it. This weekend, but it's happened several times, with what's going on in the world today and locally, I want to really put a shout out to those people that are answering my calls, my emails, and I'm assuming many others, weekends, evenings, working with us very, very closely. We have 500 adult clients with their families, 110 juvenile clients and their families, trying to address everything that's going on during this virus time and trying to come. And when I go to meetings, on Zoom, of course, many, many counties are still working remotely. They haven't opened their doors. They are not getting good direction on what to do. They're asking the state, who is working remotely and will not return to their state offices until at least January, what to do. And they don't know what to give them advice on because they're not doing it either. So I want to thank Jason Tiller and all your staff. I could call out a few of them, but then I'm afraid I'd miss some names, so I'm not going to. But they have worked graciously and tirelessly with us. Phil, who always takes my call and my emails and my texts, and probably in the evening or on the weekends, he's thinking, what the heck is she doing? Leave me alone. But he doesn't, or he might, but he doesn't say it to my face. Meredith Lemer, who always gets back to me on the weekend when I challenge them over something, the two of them respond quickly and have my answer. Michelle, Emergency Management, we worked tirelessly over the weekend for a whole group of people, and I couldn't be more grateful for the Health Department and your work so closely. And my own staff, all of them, but Michelle Callum, who only lives behind me, and we trade off duties and run here somewhere and get hotel rooms and do the food and do what we can and help out. And I'm telling you that this county is unique. And we shouldn't be, and it's sad, but when I see so many people working remotely and not able to open up their doors and care for the clients, we have some very high risk, but mostly high need, mentally ill, homeless people. And I know that this county's servicing them, and I know this county's taking care of them. And I feel very blessed every day that I go into that office and know that we're doing everything we can to prevent further virus, but also serving those families that are in such need right now. So, thank you. I couldn't be more lucky right now. I may be a short timer, but I'm so, so lucky that I got to meet everybody and work with everybody. So that's what I wanted to say. Did I take more than three minutes? God, I wish I had my own TV show. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring her back up here for regular action. First thing up is the consent agenda. We need approval of prior minutes, which is August 11th and August 18th, approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum. Is there anyone, any commissioner who wishes to amend those?
Mr. Chairman, I wish to amend the minutes of October 18th. That shows me attending a road and bridge tour, and I believe the mistake was Mike White was the member that was present there. So with that amendment in there, I say we approve the minutes.
And that amendment has been put into our packet. So with that, I would say that we will approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there any other objections?
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to combine item number 10 and 11?
On today's agenda, you mean?
On today's agenda, correct.
Well, I didn't prepare the agenda. I would have to defer to staff for that.
It seems to me like it's kind of redundant. It's the same subject, and it's all...
Yeah, the, there, for the educational facility revenue bonds, there is a required public hearing. It's called a TEFFRA hearing, and that has been noticed. But there's really no staff reporting. Functionally, I think Commissioner White's correct. I don't see a reason that those couldn't be all taken up at one time. Just need to make sure we hear from the public.
And that's the same case with number 12 and number 13?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, then with the amendment that we also amend, combine action items 10 and 11, and separately 12 and 13. So with those amendments to the consent agenda, we will pass those items. We'll move on to action items. Item number one.
Proclamation declaring September as National Recovery Month with Don Green with CKF.
Good morning, Mr. Green.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the County Commission for allowing us the time to share about National Recovery Month. Proclamation. Mental and substance use disorders, including co-occurring disorders, affect all communities nationwide. With commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. By seeking help, people who experience mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. The focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey with the theme "Join the Voices of Recovery. Together, We Are Stronger." Recovery Month spreads the message that treatment is effective and people can do, people can and do recover every day. The impact of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is apparent in our local community. An estimated 43.6 million people in the United States are affected by these conditions. Through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders. It encourages people in need of treatment and recovery services to seek help. Managing the effects of these conditions helps individuals achieve healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally. Recovery Month observance continues to work to improve lives of those affected by mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders by raising awareness of these disorders and educating communities about the effective treatment and recovery services that are available. For the above reasons, I'm asking the citizens of Saline County to join me in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month.
Okay, and in response to that, it does say, "I, Robert Vidrickson II, do hereby proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month in Saline County, Kansas, and call upon our community to observe this month with compelling programs and events that support this year's observance, the 31st anniversary of the Recovery Month observance." Do you have any...
Yes, sir.
...action items going for...
We do. Well, you know, we're holding everything virtually this year, as everybody else is. And starting on September 1st to the 12th, we have an annual Run for Recovery. This annual Run for Recovery is virtual right now, and if you go to our website and you look on, look on the front of the website, you'll drop down to the bottom, and you'll see a tab called Run for Recovery. Tab in on that, and it'll share with you how to become part of this. You can virtually run your own race, whether upon a, you know, your own route and fit in, plus you can do a one-mile walk with your children. But it's all there on our website, ckfaddictionstreatment.org. And to top it all off, on December 11, 2020, Mark Lundholm, the recovery comedian, who at times has been theoretically controversial, will be doing a virtual show for CKF Addictions Treatment on 9/11/2020 at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available at evenbright.com. And also, there's links to it on either the Pathfinder Recovery Center website and www.ckfaddictionstreatment.org. Check our Facebook page for, there's, there is a, basically, he put a little promo out for us on our Facebook page. Very interesting and fun. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Absolutely. Any comments from commissioners?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, I do move that we declare September as National Recovery Month.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess we didn't really need the, that should have been my position. I'm sorry about that.
It's all right.
So we do declare that this is a national, September is the National Recovery Month. So, Mr. Green, if you want to come forward, I have a signed proclamation to give you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you all for your hard work.
You too, Don.
Chairman, you might call for a vote on that.
Excuse me? Well, there is no, there is no vote to be done. We'll move to item number two.
Proclamation declaring 2020 as the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration with Ann Zimmerman, Vice President of the Salina League of Women Voters.
Good morning. My name is Ann Zimmerman, 3904 North Ohio Street in Salina, and this is the League of Women Voters of Salina. Proclamation, Saline County 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration Proclamation. Whereas the introduction passage and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendment, which granted women the right to vote, were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States, and whereas Kansas was the fourth state to ratify the 19th Amendment on June 16, 1919, and Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, making it the law of the land on August 26, 1920, 100 years ago this week, whereby millions of women were enfranchised, and whereas the daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters of the women who fought so hard to vote have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly 100 years, and whereas the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated while recognizing that the 19th Amendment still left many citizens disenfranchised and work remains to be done. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Saline County, one, commemorates the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States, and, two, reaffirms the desire of Saline County citizens to continue strengthening democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve the historic precedent established under the 19th Amendment. Therefore, citizens of the city of Saline County shall enjoy the freedom of voter participation, continue to fight for voting rights for all citizens, and celebrate this important milestone by proclaiming the calendar year 2020 to be the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, does your group have a, any activities planned?
Well, our biggest event was last Saturday, where we walked through the west side of town from Schilling Elementary to Thomas Park, about nine miles, talking to people along the roots in the neighborhoods. Those are most of the neighborhood, seven of the precincts that have a low voter turnout and a low voter registration. We also have been having what we call cruising for voters, where people who didn't want to walk nine miles could get in their car and cruise through a different set of precincts with signs on their cars and hollering out the window and encouraging people to vote and to register to vote, which the, there is a website to make it easy. So we actually have a QR code, which is on my mask here, one side of my mask or the other, and you point your phone at it, and it'll take you right to the website, ksvotes.org, which allows you to register to vote, to check your registration, to update your address, and to request a mail-in ballot. So we've been doing that, and we, one of our main goals in the League of Women Voters is to get people to be registered and to vote. And it's more difficult these days than it usually is, and so we continue to, we will continue to be cruising for voters with our cars. We may not walk nine miles again, but we'll be doing that through the election. I will say that there have been disparaging remarks against the League of Women Voters among some of the candidates running for office, who refused to participate in our candidate forum, which we try extremely hard to be nonpartisan and to involve all the candidates to make sure that the citizens of Salina get a chance to view the candidates running for office. And just to defend the League of Women Voters, we have people from multiple parties in our League of Women Voters, and across the country, all parties are represented. We do try to reach consensus on some issues, which means we come down one way or the other, which makes people upset on the other side, whoever didn't, whichever side we didn't come down on, someone is upset, as you probably have experienced in your own lives. But we, we are always working to be nonpartisan and to promote good information to the electorate. And I have several fellow members back here. Does anyone want to add anything?
You did good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Comments from commissioners? I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare 2020 as the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution.
Second. It's been moved in second, that we declare 2020 as the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion does carry. If you wish to step forward, I do have a signed proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three.
RFA 199-20, Rural Fire District Number One Outdoor Warning Siren for Kip with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. So I am here on behalf of Rural Fire District One to request the purchasing of an outdoor warning siren. If you remember, I was back here a couple months ago requesting that Rural Fire District One apply for a Dane Hansen Foundation grant. They were awarded $10,000 on top of their donation from Great Plains Manufacturing of $1,200, or $12,500, to make a total of $22,500 to purchase an outdoor warning siren. This outdoor warning siren would be placed at the Rural Fire District Station in Kip. And if you can see on the coverage map that I attached, this outdoor warning siren, if placed there, will cover 145 structures and 120 square feet. To caveat that, I want this to be known that this is an outdoor warning siren, not meant to be heard inside your home over your TV or air conditioning. For that, I would encourage you to download a weather app or purchase a weather radio for the inside of your house. So with that being said, there were, there were proposed three options for tornado siren. There was the brand-new outdoor warning siren for $23,000. There was the option two of a pre-owned siren with solar backup and a five-year maintenance plan already covered within the cost for $22,410. Or option three of purchasing a pre-owned outdoor warning siren with no solar backup. However, it does come with a nine-year maintenance agreement for $22,160, and that is the one that both Rural Fire and staff recommend that they go ahead and purchase.
All right. I'm curious, you know, when you look at option one as a brand-new one, I mean, is there a maintenance agreement with that one, or there was no maintenance agreement?
Correct.
And so, I mean, because it's less than $1,000 cheaper to go with a brand-new one. So I'm just kind of curious as to why they wouldn't want the new one. But if the recommendation is from the fire district and your office also, I suppose that's what I'm in favor of. So any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment regarding this? If not, we'll bring her back and look for some action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve to purchase a pre-owned outdoor warning siren with a nine-year maintenance agreement with funding from donations and a Dane Hansen Foundation grant.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 199-20, Rural Fire District Number One Outdoor Warning Siren for Kip. Any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
We will move to item number four.
RFA 200-20, Bid Award for Aggregate Shoulder Construction with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, I'm here this morning to discuss and take appropriate action on a Saline County Road and Bridge Department request to award a bid for aggregate...
Sorry about that. Let me start over then. I'm here to discuss and take appropriate action on a Saline County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for aggregate shoulder construction. Sealed bids were open on August 17, 2020, at 11:00 a.m., and we received one bid from AIPAC Kansas. And you should have a copy of the bid tabs with my estimate in there as well. All shoulder work must be completed by January 29, 2021. However, the contractor has indicated that they would be completing the construction in late November. Alternatives for action would be to, number one, accept the bid as indicated by staff recommendation, and then number two would be to reject the bid. Staff recommends to accept the bid from AIPAC Kansas for the amount of estimated work to equal $134,085. Funds for this project will be taken from the contractual asphalt work budget line item. Other contractual work to be taken from this account includes the chip seal, crack sealing, and hot mix asphalt contracts.
Where, where is this to take place at?
Yeah, there's, there's two locations. The first location is on Burma Road, and is starting at the McPherson County Line and proceeding north for three miles. And then the other location is on Don Meyer Road, going from Country Club Road north to Old Highway 40.
That's about five or six miles, I think, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Or any public comment, any from the public wishes to speak to this? If not, I will take a motion from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to AIPAC Kansas for Aggregate Shoulder Construction Project 20-5403.
I will second the motion. It has been moved in second that we approve RFA 200-20, Bid Award for Aggregate Shoulder Construction for the two projects as mentioned. Further comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you, Justin. And we'll move to item number five.
RFA 201-20, Transmission Rebuild with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. This RFA is to request the authorization of a rebuild for a transmission in a 1997 Caterpillar 140H with 10,000 hour. The machine in proper working condition has a value of $65,000. The cost of the rebuild is $24,877. However, if the repairs are started by the end of August, Foley Equipment will give us a 15% discount and a two-year extension on the warranty. That would make the warranty five years. This would make the cost of repair $21,080.65. This represents a savings of $3,720.12. The alternatives for action would be to accept the quote from Foley Equipment for $21,080.65. Two is reject the quote, or three, sell the machine on Purple Wave. Staff recommends rebuilding the transmission. This motor grader is one of the yard machines that crews use daily in their work activities and snow removal. The department is three years away from the scheduled replacement of one of the yard machines, and as stated above, the value of the machine is only if it is in working condition. The value to our effectiveness and when the machine will be sold in working condition, we believe is there. As it sits, scrap iron price would be what we could expect out of it. There is not a remanufacture option for this transmission, where you would go out and purchase a reman transmission and install it yourself. It has to be rebuilt because of its age. The budget impact, the numbers on your sheets are a little different than what I'm going to say, because I turned these in in a reverse order because of the other RFA. The current balance of our special road and bridge machinery is $1,874,393.73. That would leave a balance of $1,853,313.8. The prudent reserve for this count is $1 million.
Your recommendation says that the crews use it daily in their work activities, daily in the yard?
We consider what we call yard machines as the crews that, the machines that are normally in the yard that the crews use.
So it could go...
We just call them yard machines as a reference. But they take them out and work with them on their projects daily.
You know, the other thing that I kind of look at and kind of shake my head is that you said as it sits, scrap iron price would be the only thing that we could expect out of it. But if a new transmission or a rebuilt transmission is $21,000, then would make it worth $60,000. That seems to me like it'd be worth about 40 grand. But that's just my thinking. Other questions from commissioners?
I'm a little surprised that you have a 23-year-old machine that's still in your fleet. I know that a lot of your machines are on a, on a trade-in or buy-back type situation, so can you explain why this 23-year-old grader is so...
I can't. We have 15 total motor graders in our department. 12 of those motor graders are used by the Rural Patrol, and those 12 machines are the ones that are in the rotating buy-back program. The three motor graders that we have for the crews to use are when, we keep three in the yard for snow removal and for the crews to use, and those are just when they need replaced. And usually about 20 years is their life cycle as we work through them. When we do a repurchase bid, we won't send one back, and that's how we rotate the yard machines.
Are any comments from the public? I would ask for something from the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the rebuild for the Caterpillar Transmission as presented by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 201-20, Transmission Rebuild. There further comments? I'm really wrestling with this one myself. I mean, if we've got three in there and we've only got four work crews, I mean, I just would think that the crews would be able to have one of the, the road, road machines help them out for whatever that project is, but apparently not. So I will call for a vote. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to item number six.
RFA 202-20, Dump Truck Purchase, again with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
We're in again, Darren.
Yep. We will, this request for action is for the award contract for the purchase of two new tandem axle dump trucks. This purchase utilizes the Sourcewell governmental purchase contracts. Saline County would, in effect, be tagging on to similar government contracts. This is allowed under Saline County Policy 40.32, Section 2, Part D, Exceptions to Competitive Purchases. We have purchased trucks and equipment in the past on this policy. We received two quotes. One from MHC Kenworth of Salina, Kansas, for a Kenworth T370 Dump Chassis and Bed for Truck Center Companies of Salina, Kansas, bid a Freightliner 108SD Dump Chassis and Bed for $217,229. The alternatives for action would be to accept the quote from MHC Kenworth in the amount of $209,226, or accept the quote from Truck Center Companies in the amount of $217,226. $29, I'm sorry. Reject all bids and re-bid, or reject all the bids. Staff recommends accepting the quote from MHC Kenworth Salina, Kansas, for two tandem axle dump trucks with dump bodies in the amount of $209,226. The Board of... The Board of County Commissioners has approved a personnel request from the Road and Bridge Department for two truck drivers in the 2021 budget. Since the monies for the trucks is to come out of the special equipment account that has a balance of $1,853,313.8, we feel the trucks should be ordered now for the January, February delivery timeframe, so we have equipment in place for the additional employees. The monies are already there and payment is not due until delivery. We chose to use the Sourcewell contracts to expedite the purchase process, saving approximately one and a half to two months of time getting trucks ordered. No trucks will be disposed of since this is in addition to our fleet. The budget impact, there's a current balance of $1,853,313.8. This would leave $1,644,087.8.
Couple of questions, Darren. I assume that these are steel beds, not aluminum?
Correct.
And my second question is in regards to the delivery. I know that we've had equipment here in the last year that we've waited months and months and months for. Can we hang our hat on the fact that this is going to be a January, February delivery for certain? And if not, is there any kind of a penalty that would be paid? I mean, if we do go ahead and hire these people and then we're six months before we get the trucks, that doesn't make sense.
The employees will not be hired until the trucks get here. I don't have any intention of hiring somebody and then not having a piece of equipment to even train them in. So it's the January, February, the first of January comes, we're not going to just put out a request for employment until the trucks. We know that they're here and/or on their way.
But again, back to the question, we don't have any guarantee that it actually will be January, February.
No. No, you're really at the mercy of the dealers and how they can get equipment. With our purchases, the way that we structure them, we don't go to the lot and just say, I want that one. We buy them from the dealers and then they order them to, sometimes you get lucky and they have one in stock, but what you order, they, it comes off their inventory. You know, most manufacturers make dealers take so much stock. So when we purchase them, then they can order them, and then that comes off of the stock that they have to take.
Maybe I'm splitting hairs, but it just frustrates me as the guy who's signing the check or one of the guys that signs the check, that we buy something and it's months and months and months before we get it. So that's a frustrating point for me. Other comments from Commissioners?
Quick education for myself, Darren. The purpose of using the government contract in buying these, is that just to expedite delivery? I mean, do they give you a cost and then they bid any tweaks that you do to that piece of equipment?
They do. They still meet our specs. We send them specs and they say, okay, this is what we have. And it's Sourcewell, and they do national account purchasing. So they've gone to each manufacturer and said, okay, here's our lowest price. Even if you do go out to bid, this is probably what it's going to come back at. It keeps it competitive that way.
Darren, what's the number of tandem dump trucks in the county's fleet?
You know, we currently have, I believe, 10.
And those are all tandems?
No.
Or that includes your single axles?
There are two single axles.
Okay. And approximately three years ago, we piggybacked with KDOT. I don't know if it was through Sourcewell or, I'm not very familiar with Sourcewell, that we also purchased.
Yes. Those two, those were spreader, aluminum bed spreader tandem axle trucks that we did piggyback off of KDOT for.
Okay.
Sourcewell's national account, and the KDOTs are state accounts.
All righty. I guess my question is, you've considered the stainless or the aluminum boxes versus the steel?
We buy trucks that are going to be used for salt spreading stainless because of the corrosiveness of the salt. These will not be part of our plow fleet.
Okay. Thank you. I was curious.
You hit on something there, Darren, that tripped a trigger for me, but you said we have 10 dump trucks in our fleet now, but we only have, I thought we only had four drivers. Is that correct, or am I?
We have four designated dump truck drivers. As you know, we use, one dump truck, it hauls a piece of equipment most of the time. It's set up with a panel hitch and it hauls equipment. And the other ones are getting to an age where they are not reliable.
That I'm aware of. I've seen some of them and the issues that they have. And I will say this, that I visit Road and Bridge enough that it's a very rare occasion that there isn't a dump truck in a bay with a major issue. I will say that. So any other comments from Commissioners?
One question that brings for me is, do you have your dump trucks on a program like you do your graders that keeps that turnover there where you have dependable equipment?
This is, this is part, this purchase will be part of a plan that we have had to get them into. I figure a dump truck's worth about 20 years. So this would get our fleet up to 10 that we would rotate and purchase one every two years.
Sounds like a plan. Any other comments from Commissioners? Is there any public comment regarding the purchase of this dump trucks? If not, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the quote for a Kenworth Dump Truck to MHC Kenworth in the amount of $209,226 as recommended by staff.
Second motion.
Okay. I would like to amend that just a little bit here as it's written because it's for two dump trucks. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Not a dump truck, but two?
Thank you, Chairman.
As it's written here, so.
Thank you.
If you will accept that amendment?
Absolutely.
And the second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 202-20 Dump Truck Purchase, Dump Trucks Purchase. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Darren. We'll move to item number seven.
RFA 203-20 Overdose Data to Action Grant with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. So the first of several things this morning. So this RFA is actually year two of the overdose data to action grant to focus on overdose prevention in Saline County. Year one was, had to be scaled back quite a bit because of COVID, so some of those work planned items were able to be rolled over to year two, which will include community education, opioid needs assessment with the intent of turning that needs assessment into a opioid dashboard later on in 2021. This grant is for $50,000 and the period is from September 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2021. Alternatives for action are to refuse the grant and not sign, send staff back for more information, or approve and, or sign the grant contract. We recommend signing the grant contract as this will allow us to have an impact on prevention of opioid use and misuse in Saline County. If the project is not funded, then the project work cannot occur.
Jason, where does the grant money come from?
This comes from, through KDHE from the feds. The original, I think source was from HHS for opioid overdose last year, and so they able to continue to fund this three-year project.
So to clarify things, this does not cost the county any money whatsoever.
No, there is no match. There is no additional cost to the county. We get the money to do the work and.
And if we don't accept the grant, then we don't do the work.
We just don't do the work, correct.
It's a program that doesn't get fulfilled.
Right.
So obviously, I will use my overused comment that I make every time one of these comes up, and that is, I sure hate to turn away free money, so.
Mr. Chair, quick question, Jason.
Here on that is, do we have the manpower to handle all of this, or are you going to have to add staff to do this?
No, the health educator, now that we have additional intermittent staff and the health educator has moved over and actually taken over their role in the last couple of months, that is part of their position. And so they have taken over the year one work that we were not really able to accomplish because of COVID, and now will be doing the continuous work on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDHE overdose data to action grant as presented by staff.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 203-20 Overdose Data to Action Grant. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number eight.
RFA 204-20 Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant, again with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
And again, hello, Jason.
Hello again. So this is the epidemiology and laboratory capacity grant with a focus on increasing staffing capacity in health departments. This was provided to all health departments and was based off of population and their dispersion of these funds. And its purpose is for enhanced detection, response, surveillance. And primarily, we are using this, this grant will be used, I just realized there's a typo, will not be sued, it will be used, to offset the cost of additional intermittent staff that we have hired or will have to hire to help deal with case investigations, et cetera, due to COVID. This grant is for $134,330. And the nice thing about this grant is that it gives us the flexibility since it has an expiration date out through November of 2022, so that will, like I said, will help cover those costs for temporary staff. So again, alternatives for action, refuse the grant, not sign, send it back for information, or please sign the grant. We recommend signing the grant. We have already been using some intermittent staff to help with case investigations, and so this will help with that cost, since that cost was not budgeted as part of our normal health department budget for that additional intermittent staff.
All right. Sounds good to me. Comments from Commissioners?
Couple of questions, Jason. The cost that you've already incurred with your intermittent help, was that not put into the county's? Okay. So we might.
Some of that, I believe, originally was in Spark. If it wasn't in Spark, based off of the timing, we can backdate for this grant and then be able to file for reimbursement if that timing didn't cover it at that point.
Yeah. So as a reminder, all the funds from the Coronavirus Relief Fund have to be spent by December 30th. So we did include funding in there, but it was primarily for the costs that they've incurred to date, and so this grant will help with those costs going forward and certainly any costs after December 30th.
Could we have, could we have projected costs up until December 30th?
Until December 30th, yes, but not past that.
And then had this money to get us further down the road and, you see what I'm taking more money out of one pot to leave some in this one?
Yeah. The health department did request other thing, they did not identify this program, but they are part of the direct aid plan as well as the reimbursement plan for the Coronavirus Relief. They're doing a couple of other programs with that money.
Thank you.
And just as an FYI, and I'll mention again in my update, there are a couple of additional grants that we are applying for through KDHE for COVID funds to cover other expenses as part of the response, so I don't think we'll have any issues there.
Bring it back to the commission for action then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the KDHE ELC agreement as presented by staff.
Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 204-20 Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Grant. Further comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll move to item number nine.
Resolution 20-2297 Review of Section 6 Mask Mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
As everything COVID technology sometimes mishaps too.
Could you hit the lights on that portion over there too, please?
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. So here we are again, as everything seems to be about COVID these days. So nationally, you can see the national numbers posted up there. One thing that's interesting to note, or at least that's probably good to note though, is that over the last two-week period as compared to the previous one, the increase in US cases and US deaths were actually both down a little bit from the previous two weeks. So nationally, it seems like the picture is starting to look a little bit better. Of course, we, like all trends, you got to watch for a while before you can really be able to define what's happening. The same can't be said for the state of Kansas. You can see the current numbers here as they were posted yesterday from KDHE. Total cases and hospitalizations are up, and that is a slight increase. Deaths, however, although there is an two-week increase in numbers, but that does represent a decrease from the previous two weeks. So I hope I'm not losing you there with the increases and decreases. And then, of course, the more negative tests we see, the better it is for all around. Saline County, yesterday we reported 439 total, 342 recovered, which we probably, as we update roles, see some additions to that number this week. 88 active cases and nine deaths, which is up four in the last 14 days. The case rate has increased a little bit, but so has the states, but we are still under the state overall. On a positive note, the hospitalization average, though, for the county has decreased to, right now they've had an average of two daily, where previously it was five. And right now, cumulatively, we are running at about a 10% positive rate. Excuse me. By the way, if anybody can figure out how to rid the world of ragweed, I'd be extremely But that positive rate is calculated as the number of positive tests over the total tests for a population. So that 10% is reflective of the number of people tested. I realized, I'm sorry. I flip-flopped my numbers. That should be 4,211 people tested with 3,790 negative results. After a while, a lot of these numbers all start to kind of run together, so have to be careful. The overall trend this month, we can still see, has still been a steady but slow increase. We are still, other than that one day early on in August, single case numbers each day, which is a good trend, and we hope that that continues even as school and colleges are getting going. So last week, I mentioned as part of the other updates, the K through 12 gating criteria that we've been working on with the schools. And so shortly after, after that, KSDE released a further in-depth gating criteria. And then after spending the last couple of weeks looking at that one with the school districts, we had actually have taken what KSDE put out as their recommendation and what some of the things that we had worked on and combined them into one document, which will be published with our press release tomorrow. But we are still going to be looking at the same data sets that were on the But we are still going to be looking at the same data sets that were on the KSDE one, which is a two-week county percent positive rate, a two-week cumulative county incidence rate, the trend in county incidence rate, and the local referring hospital capacity. And to make it simple, we are working with GIS to actually add a tab to our GIS dashboard that will have this information and the color coding, which I will show you next. And again, this is a tool. So in addition to that community information, we'll also be looking at the building or what's happening in the district to help them with making decisions about what they need to do as far as their district is concerned, with their mode of education. And then it's color-coded. And so this right here is just the, the data sets. Just to give you an idea, like I said, the full document, which will have all of this data plus the recommended actions based off of these different colors, kind of the assessment of what we're looking at, will be released tomorrow. But remember, people just need to remember that this is a tool for conversation and helping to make decisions. This is not the decision matrix, meaning that we'll look at this information, we'll look at the picture, we'll look at what's happening in the community. Because one thing to keep in mind about community trends is say if there's an outbreak, that may artificially change the incidence rate. So we'll, you know, we'll look at those things with the, the school districts, and we talk often with the school districts. It seems, of course, lately it's about every day with, with somebody. If you want to get down into the gritty numbers with KDHE as far as that, that data, they do have a tab on their dashboard that will have those indicators by week. It can get a little confusing, so just make sure that you look at it carefully if you do look at that. And then your science lesson for today, for this week. So one of the questions we get often too is, why can't I just take a COVID-19 test to get out of quarantine? So everybody is fully, I think, well aware that there's a 14-day quarantine period if you're exposed to COVID. And the reason there's a 14-day period is that reflects the incubation period of anywhere from two to 14 days for the disease. So when a disease particle invades a cell, it has to incubate or has to grow. So it gets into the cell, and then it takes over the cell's machinery that usually produces the nutrients that the cell needs and tells it to start producing virus particles. So as it goes through this process, then the, the cell's machinery starts producing tons of virus particles until that cell is so full that it causes it to break open and release more virus particles. And this goes on and on until either a couple of things happen. Either your immune system shuts it down, depending on your exposure, or you develop symptoms and then become symptomatic and positive. But that process can take anywhere from two to 14 days. So if you get tested today and you're negative, that doesn't mean tomorrow that you won't pass that threshold and become positive, which is why you still have to remain in that quarantine. And so my recommendations, of course, stay the same. Continue to wear the mask, social distance, hand washing, staying home when sick, which I know is going to get, right now is difficult for some people to figure out, is it allergies? Is it, is it a cold? Is it COVID? But checking your temperatures. There is a really good comparison graphic, and I think we'll probably incorporate that into the press release tomorrow that you can look at, that kind of gives you the comparison between COVID, cold, flu, and allergies, and helping you to decide, or at least give you a, a starting point of what might be going on, since the symptomology of COVID is pretty wide. And with that, that ends my update for this period.
Okay, unless we're going to change something, we really don't need a motion for anything, but I will take comments from commissioners. I think we need to fall in line and just continue our mask mandate. And hopefully those that, that people will follow that recommendations and, and head in the right direction. And at some point in time, we're going to get this thing under control. But as, as they say, we've got to do it together, we've got to work together to get it done. So thank you, Jason, for your update. And again, I'll ask if there's any commissioners who wish to have any comments. So hearing none, we will continue with the mask mandate. All right, item number 10.
It's a public hearing and action on RFA 205-20, resolution 20-2303, educational facilities revenue bonds for Kansas Wesleyan University with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So on July 28th, the commission adopted resolution number 20-2300, expressing your intent to issue new bonds to partially refund a series of 2012 bonds issued on behalf of Kansas Wesleyan University, and to also add new money for additional campus improvements. A public hearing has been noticed for today. So the first action requested would be to open the public hearing, take any public comment on this, and then close the public hearing. Following that, staff recommends that the, the commission proceed to issue the bonds as requested via adoption of the resolution included in your packet and authorizing the chair to sign the various documents required. And I'd be happy to answer questions. We also have Scott Waller from the firm of Gilmore and Bell that helped prepare the attached documents, voluminous documents, that would be happy to answer questions as well.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none, I guess at this point we go, go forward with the, with the passing of the resolution, ask for a vote?
Yeah, if there are no other questions, we, and no comments from the public, that would be the appropriate next step.
All right, I will ask for any motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution 20-2303 as presented.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded, we approve RFA number 205-20, resolution 20-2303, educational facilities revenue bonds for Kansas Wesleyan University. Is there any further comments from commissioners? If not, I will ask for a vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. The motion does carry. Thank you. We'll move to a combination of item number 12 and 13.
It's public hearing and possible action for RFA 206-20, resolution 20-2304, Crestwood Industrial Revenue Bond Redemption with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning again, Phil.
Good morning again. So while we're talking bonds, we're issuing some new ones, we might as well pay off some old ones. We previously issued industrial revenue bonds on behalf of Crestwood, Inc., and they are looking to pay those bonds off at this time. I'm sorry, Bennington State Bank, which holds the bonds, has signed a consent to the redemption and provided an estimate of the cost of the redemption. Under the industrial revenue bonds, the county actually holds title to the Crestwood property. And so this would involve both our consent to go ahead and pay off the bonds and also transfer of title of the property back to Crestwood once that is done. So the resolution that is before the commission today incorporates both of those items and authorizes the chair and the county clerk to sign the title transfer documents. Again, I am happy to answer questions, as is Mr. Waller.
And I show my ignorance here on, on bonds and so forth, but I presume that Crestwood would be the, the person, the responsible for paying this bond off, not the county?
Yes, that's correct.
Further questions, comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution 20-2304 as presented.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 206-20, resolution 20-2304, Crestwood Industrial Revenue Bond Redemption. Further comments or questions? If not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you, Phil. We will move to the informational items that are on our agenda today. So under informational items, item number one.
The Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
All right, good morning again, Jason.
Good morning. Well, since, you know, the last six months have been pretty well primarily COVID, I don't have a, a presentation for this one as I normally do. But I did want to mention a few things over the last six months that were going on in the health department. So of course, we stood up our operations for the COVID pandemic. That included those scaling back, some of our services are changing them in order to be able to, either to the outside conditions or just be able to deal with the pandemic. WIC has been operating primarily remotely over the phone. They are in the office, but most of their client work is done over the phone with very few in-person interactions. MCH has had to take their very successful becoming a mom class that was usually done monthly, in person, of course, and try and transition it to a virtual undertaking, which was not exactly easy. And while it hasn't had the same effect, of course, as having the, the in-person training that they would normally do, it still has been valuable in providing that information and, and training to new mothers and families. Home Health, besides still seeing clients, has assisted in testing efforts. In fact, they went through and did a mass testing a few weeks ago at the Salina Rescue Mission, and has also been part of our planning for future mass COVID testing if needed. Childcare Licensing has been working with childcare providers, of course, in Celine County and Ottawa and McPherson, to continuously help provide guidance, answer questions, and keep childcare centers operational during this time of COVID, and as well as when childcare providers would run into potential issues where children may have been exposed and what they needed to do, and help quell any type of fears so that we can keep necessary childcare services running. And of course, clinic, God bless all of them, they have been carrying the lion's share of this COVID pandemic as far as case investigation and contact tracing. Over the next few months, we plan to try and add a couple of additional intermittent staff for case investigation so that we have a, a team that is doing case investigations, and also will allow the clinic to transition back to some of their primary duties, which is coming up right now, of course, like childhood immunizations. And then, of course, we got flu season coming up. So we're going to be still planning to do the community flu clinic, and it'll look quite, probably quite a bit different this year than it has in the past. And then we'll also be looking at doing some additional flu shot outreach in the fall. Budget update, I don't have specific numbers right now, because as most of it, we've had funds coming in, funds going out, funds being reimbursed from other places, money provided that we weren't expecting. But I think budget overall, you know, every year we have been under budget to some extent, so, and I think that we are still in a good spot right now. I mentioned earlier, we're applying for two other grants that are in total of about $170,000. One grant will be for additional testing capacity so that we can, in partnership planning with Salina Family and Salina Regional, maybe be able to provide some drive-through testing sites of some sort, primarily focused, at least for this funding, on those that don't have insurance for indigenous populations, like our homeless population, and testing. And then we've also applied for one, which was specific for health departments, that will help just recoup some of the reimbursement expense that may come up with, that we haven't really been able to plan for yet, because we may not know exactly what that's going to entail yet. And with that, if there are any questions?
Questions from commissioners? If not, thank you for all your hard work, and, and certainly pass along to your staff that our appreciation and, and their efforts and for being on the front line and, and due diligence to their, to their work. So thank you very much.
I will do that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, sorry. Is it too late?
Go ahead.
Okay. Jason, how long, when we do a, when you guys do a test, how long does it take for you to get back the results of that?
So right now, we are still not doing the test. The test that we did like for the mission, we turned around, we had sent all those batch to, back to KDHE lab. They still took two to three days to get back, just for doing that. On a normal basis, when somebody gets tested at their primary care provider, really, there's a couple of factors it depends on. It depends on what lab that test goes to to get processed. Some private labs take a little bit longer than others. And it also depends on how many COVID tests a lab ends up with that they have to process at one time. So if they get influx of a lot of tests, sometimes that may push the, the period, you know, the time back to get those results. I think on average right now, I think it's about probably three to four days to get results back. But that does vary too, just depending on those factors.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. We'll move to item number two.
County Administrator's update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Hello, Phil.
Hello again. Just a few items this morning. First, the 911 committee met with the two radio vendors last week, conducted four days worth of negotiations. And if commissioners have questions, Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stambach could provide more details. But the upshot is, we believe after those four days of negotiations, there will be a clear recommendation that will be coming to your commission and to the city commission. Hannah and I will be meeting this afternoon with David Artiberry from Stifel Nicolaus to talk about financing for the county's portion. And of course, we still are in discussions with the city about the appropriate split between the two entities on that. The second item, I just wanted to provide an update on the coronavirus relief funding. The big news, of course, is that we're still waiting. We submitted our documents to the state on time. They confirmed receipt, but they have not gotten back to us yet. So in the meantime, while we are waiting to hear back, we are working with each of the local entities that were a part of our plan to get their banking information and an agreement with each of those entities so that we are ready to process checks as soon as we hear from the state. So at some point, I will probably be coming to the commission with a big batch of agreements for you to sign en masse. And then the last thing I'll mention.
If I might ask one question regarding that, Phil. So in other words, we have to wait for okay from the state for us to give OCCK or whoever it is that's getting the funds? Once we hear from the state and they okay it, then we can release the funds? Is that how it works?
That's exactly correct, Mr. Chairman. So the state previously had said that we could go ahead and disperse reimbursement funding, but wait on the direct aid funding. And then they changed their mind and said, please don't release any of the funds until you hear back from us. So we still have all $11,26,434 sitting in an account, just waiting to hear something back from the state so we can get those funds out into the community and get it to start working.
Drawing interest at a rate of about 20 cents a day or something like that?
Drawing interest at a rate of zero, because they specifically told us not to put it in an interest-bearing account.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another fun little detail.
Mr. Wees?
Yeah, a question. Is the chamber going ahead and taking applications and doing their part even though the money hasn't been allotted to them? I mean, if, if they're going to wait for the state before they even start their part of it, it's going to put all of those. it, it's going to put all of those private businesses and such way back, pushing them?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly would wish that the state would get this done as soon as possible, but I don't believe the Chamber has started taking applications yet, the Chamber Foundation, sorry, has started taking applications yet. I did receive from them yesterday a draft of some changes that they would like to their agreement with us, and I've sent those to Counselor Montoya. So we are continuing those conversations with them about how that program will actually work. So I don't believe they're taking application yet. But that leads me into the last thing that I wanted to update this morning, because for businesses that do need funding, our CDBG CV funding is now live. The application is available as of this morning. Hannah just did a press release before we came into the meeting today, so we would encourage folks to contact either our staff or North Central Kansas Planning Staff and see if they might be qualified for the CDBG funding, you know? And then obviously, the funding through the CRF will be coming as soon as we can. And that's all I had for this morning.
Okay, we'll move to item number three.
Commissioners' comments.
I would comment that I was asked to speak yesterday at the Rotary Club Civic Organizations Luncheon. I took along our administrator, Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, with me. It kind of consisted of a, basically, a state-of-the-county address-type thing, and it was their first meeting back to be in person, and all the protocol was followed, and so that went off very well and very well received, and we're happy to do it. There will be an upcoming one for the Lions Club, I believe, in September sometime. So to the best of my recollection, in our, in my almost four years here, no one from the county has ever been asked to speak at a civic organization, at least no one from the county commission side of it. I think, I'm sure that other elected officials have been asked to do something, but not from the county commission portion of it, if I'm not mistaken. So anyway, we're happy to do that. So any other comments from commissioners? Announcements? I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.